Marty Olson, your host. And tonight, I'm delighted to have a brand-new guest on the program. And we are moving into the local political season. So I've got Republican candidate for New Orleans City Council, Hans Hartman. And welcome to the program.
Thank you very much, Marty. I'm very honored to be here, and thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to a spirited conversation and give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves to the audience and the community. And while you're embarking on this journey over the next couple of months to become an elected official, but before we get to that, I think it would be appropriate, perhaps, to share with our audience who you are. Are you a local guy, or did you come into the area? What brought you here?
Yeah. I actually am originally from New Orleans. And I moved around a lot as a kid. My parents had six kids when I was young. I was number six. So I was the baby of the bunch. And we moved from New Orleans to Atlanta because my father was working for a company. And he moved us out there to Georgia. And then, less than a year later, because he was doing so well with the job, they said, hey, we're going to have you go to a place in California. And at the time, my mom had been writing for the original Star Trek. And Gene Roddenberry said the 11 months before, hey, you need to move out to California so you can be a staff writer.
That's your mom now?
That's my mom.
Yep. That's pretty exciting.
Well, I mean, it's a job. You know, people think that certain things are more glamorous than others. It's a job, and there are a lot of people who are unemployed in the film and TV business. Because the joke is, if you say, hey, I'm an actor, they say, and what restaurant do you work at? Because those are the jobs that they normally get. But my mom was a writer. And when we moved to Georgia, she called up Gene and said, hey, we just moved from Louisiana. And he's like, are you in California? And she's like, no, we moved to Atlanta, Georgia. And he was like, click, hung up the phone, and wouldn't talk to her anymore after that because he didn't want to have the burden back in the '60s of having to do work across the nation. So when we moved to California, my mom got very involved with a bunch of things. I was always gravitated to media, film production, TV production. But I grew up learning about film. I was a film teacher. I was a mentor at a high school down in Orlando, Florida, when I lived down there. And I helped them actually win a Crystal Real Award by mentoring them for one of their years. And I've always loved to help people. And being in the film business, doing the things that I've done, being an entrepreneur, being the person who's always the one that they go, and how do we get out of this situation, Hans? And I have to come up with, here's an answer, or let's figure that out, which is sometimes the answer. It's one of those things that you just kind of start picking up as you are in business. And because I love to help people, one of the things that I really want to do, especially after the last election, and the things that I saw going on, and the things that I've seen in New London since I moved back here, and out of my 60 years, I've... even though I'm from Louisiana and I grew up in Southern California, I've lived in the greater New London area more years than anywhere else in my entire life. And I've always said, you know, I should get into politics and help people that way.
There's lots of ways to give back, and politics is one of those ways.
Absolutely. In fact, right now, I'm helping out a local school, St. Joseph's School over on Squire Street. And for one thing that we've done, which was a carnival...
That was pretty recent.
Yeah, just a few weeks ago. I was asked, well, how much are we going to spend on renting the games? And I said, rent the games? Why do that when we can build them? And I said, come on, guys, let's put on a show, or let's build some games.
So you must know Armin Bodett.
Armin Bodett. I was going to say, he is the one person who I could count on all the time if I said, I need this, like this, this way. He'd say, got it, and he'd go and he'd do it. And I never had to worry. But almost all of the games that we had, I either rebuilt or built, from an eight-foot-tall Plinko game to a ring-the-bell game, you know, with the hammer and like that. But it was a great success. People were saying, oh, you'll be lucky if you make $1,500. And we made over $10,000 total into the bank right now. And as we get the last little bits settled up, it'll be even more than that.
If you make 10 times what they were estimating, that's pretty darn good.
Absolutely. And that is what I do when people say, you can't do it. I say, I'll not only do it, but I will do it that much better than you think. And when I talked to Gina Phillips, when she was running, first time she was in the city council...
She ran two years ago. She worked very, very hard.
Oh, gosh, she is a hard worker. And just, I mean, watching her on the campaign and also watching her in her business, she is hardworking, whether it's politics or doing her paving company, Northeast Paving.
And she gives back in a multitude of ways to the community.
Absolutely. In fact, she helped us by redoing, like, filling all the cracks in the playground over at the school and the church parking lot. And she's just nice. I mean, my gosh, you know, you wouldn't think that somebody who does so much would be so nice. She's that nice. And she loves to help people. And I'm very much the same way. I just want to help. And when I saw her doing what she did, I said, you know what? I need to step up. So I helped with some of the campaigning stuff, you know, went and did the sign-waving and talked to people and like that. But when it all comes down to it, Marty, we have to step up because if not me, then who? Because everyone goes, oh, somebody will do it. Well, I've never met somebody with the name of somebody, or anybody, or nobody.
Well, you know, and you're so spot on. And the easy thing to do is to not do it. That's the easy way out.
Correct.
Running for office is daunting, it's challenging. And if successful, it'll make the campaigning seem like it was a walk in the park.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, gear yourself up for more.
Well, I figure it like this. Being a producer, producing film, producing TV, and I don't really think about the people I've worked with and go, oh, they're so special, or anything. Because they're just people. But when I think about the things that I've done, the things that I have accomplished, the things that I have gotten moved forward, for instance, right now, my producing partner is a man who put together the funding for all of the pictures that Orion Pictures made. When he left them, he moved to Miramax, and Orion Pictures kind of went away. He went to Miramax, put all their pictures together. He left Miramax. Have you seen a Miramax picture lately? I haven't. And he went to Entertainment Partners. And all in all, he's put together funding for more than 900 feature films. And he's the one who calls me up and says, hey, what do you think about this? And what do you think about doing that? And can we get this done? And this guy's at the top of his game. He teaches at three different universities in New York. He works out of the New York office. He's got his own consulting business. He does this for a living. He's done it for years, 40 years. And he asks me, I don't know how to do this. How do we do this? And I go, not a problem. I'll take care of it. Because getting things done is not about being the smartest person in the room. Because if it were, you know, most of us would...
There's a lot of smart people.
Well, there are a lot of smart people. But when it comes to the smartest person in the room, smartest person in the room actually is the one who goes, I don't know how to do this exactly, but if I work with that person or I work with these people, even if they're people across the aisle, that's how you get things done. You just have to know how to get people motivated enough to do the right thing. And by helping people, keeping all of your plans about, does it help the people or does it help me? Forget about me. I'm not part of the equation. I am a vessel of how do we get it done for New London? That's all I want to do. I just want to make New London a better place.
More people, not just politics, I mean, many aspects of life, we'll read a list about who got credit. How much more could be accomplished?
Oh, my gosh. I am to the point now in my life where I do not want credit for things. I don't want credit. If I'm doing something, I want people to know that I can get the things done, if I say I can get them done, to continue to do things to help people. But if it's, hey, let's go and have a big, you know, an award ceremony. Give this person an award. I don't want awards. I want people to see what I do, see the work that I do, and that's the payback. That's all I want. And I actually have several different things that I really want to get taken care of in New London. And pardon me, I've written some notes because the budget deficit for schools and the frozen federal grants and the calls for use of fund reserves, not a good deal. And this is where we've gotten in this past several years, when it's not people having opposite viewpoints going, hey, let's figure this out, instead of just one group of people going, let's push this through. And nobody's looking after the kids. If you have a school that can't afford to pay for something, well, by golly, you've got to figure out what's going on because it used to be able to. What's going on? Are you having too many people get paid too much money? Probably. Are you having people who don't have anything to do with this school getting paid? Probably. Are you mismanaging what you have in front of you and not go... Look at, we have more magnet schools in this area than anywhere else in the state.
Well, a dozen years ago, when I was on council at the time, when we had a special master come in and basically took over the schools.
Right.
And he made, forced a decision. I mean, it wasn't really a choice that we were going to have this K through 12 magnet school district. The entire educational district would be a magnet school.
Right.
But there were some benchmarks that we would have to meet in terms of getting the full funding regarding out-of-district students. And we've never met that. And I mean, and he forced this on us because he says, New London cannot afford, through its tax base, to educate its kids properly. And this was going to be a problem solver. And in terms of academic performance, to date, it's failing.
Having taught kids, being a substitute teacher at some private schools, having taught at the college level, at Full Sail University down in Florida, having actually created my own teaching company to mentor kids on how to learn, and also working for Connecticut School of Broadcasting. I worked for them for two years. The only way you can get people to learn is to first keep their attention, and then to bring them up to your level. You don't teach down. You teach up. And you make things exciting. And you bring them into what you're teaching them. Teachers today want to spew out numbers and figures and dates and people's names and all this. And it's like, yes, great, okay, we get it. But to do that, you've got to get them interested. There's no kid in the world who wants to sit there and be bored to death, especially in today's climate. Every kid is like, yeah, I can see that on YouTube. I can learn it faster, and now I can teach you teach. But on YouTube, they have to be interesting, or else they don't make any money, and they don't make any more videos. Classrooms need to be more like that in the excitement factor, in the, I understand this, or I don't understand this. If I need the help, give me a hand up. Don't give me a handout. That's my whole thing is, I will give anybody a hand up, but a handout? No, it does nothing for you. Teach a man to fish, you feed him for life. Give a man a fish, you fed him for the day. We have that. We have Ocean Beach.
Yep.
375,000 or something like that deficit this year? We can't do that. We need to bring in subcontractors. Get rid of Sedexo. Do not renew that contract. What is this? We're in August. Next month, they lose their contract. It's up. People are going to balk at this, but one of the best places for the entertainment side besides, I think it's Amusement, Amusement Somebody, I've got it in my notes, but the one that's local. And I love working with people who are local. Because one of my old business partners said, I don't buy anything through the mail. And I said, oh, why is that? He said, because I can't take it and throw it through their window if it's broken. And I laughed as well. But it makes sense. I mean, how many people have you ever done business with, real business with, that you can't go drive over to where they are and shake their hand?
I'm big on relationship building. I ran a home improvement business for 20 years.
Well, there you go. See? Those people did business with you not because you were the biggest, but because they said, you're the best. They wanted to work with you because of you. You created that relationship. You got them excited about you. And that's the whole thing. And when we look at Ocean Beach and what they have there, it has so much potential. In my entertainment career, I worked 16 years on and off for the Disney Company. And I saw how a lot of these things can go from, it's a piece of cardboard, for God's sakes, to, oh, my gosh, there's Tinker Bell. And we need to have, we need to have a mindset that it's a place for year-round entertainment. It's not just a summer beach resort. If you go there in February, there should be something going on. And nothing's going on. The place is a ghost town. You can walk up and down the boardwalk.
But I don't think nothing's open down there.
Correct.
I mean, the banquet hall is available, but it's not a one-night contract.
Right. It should be a destination. Look at Quasi. Yes, they close during the winter, but you know what? They're open nine months out of the year, at least in part. All sorts of places open up, and they say, we're going to stay open. Quite honestly, one of the people that I think really need to be looked at, and they've shown a lot of interest, is Mohegan Sun, to run the entertainment part. Because they know how to entertain. Because if we had, right over there, we had an Ocean Beach Comedy Club, or we had, and we had a restaurant that was open every night, and we had bands, and we had all these things coming in, it's more money coming into us. Yes, they have their cut because they're the management company. But if you have an apartment building here and in New York and in Philadelphia and in Chicago and Los Angeles and Louisiana, you're not going to be running all those buildings yourself. You have a management company or a manager. And you do that by looking at things from up here, and you spread it out. New London needs to stop trying to be everything to everyone and let the people who are good at what they do, do what they do. And we need to get New London to stop trying to be everything to everyone. Because they're not, and they can't be. And then, the one that we all experienced or didn't experience this summer, Sale Fest. Oh, my gosh. What a no-brainer. How can we not have Sale Fest? It brings in more money. It's Christmas in the summer for all of our restaurants and all of our vendors and all of our shops. And it just opens up downtown, and the ferries are running like mad. They're completely full. And we have bleed-offs into other towns as well. And we have everybody who can drive in, drive in. And I tell you, when you have something like what we had this year, where Sale Fest was awash, and then, I don't know if you watched the fireworks...
It fogged out, or rained out, or whatever.
Well, yeah, it was one of those where it went boom. Hey, that would have been pretty. Boom. Hey, that would have been pretty. But it was kind of a, it was a metaphor for what New London did with Sale Fest this year. Great opportunity, didn't act on it. Didn't do it because they said, oh, we can't do this because we can't do this because we can't do this.
This is one of the, at least from where I sit, one of the issues of having a lack of diversity of thought in our government.
Absolutely.
A one-party town, excuse me, and the strong mayor in particular, because he's running things kind of as a little dictator. The council is a body, really does not push back, even ask questions. They just go along to get along, as they say.
Well, they have no reason to push back.
That goes with the beach, or Sale Fest, or whatever he's doing. You know, one thing that folks don't realize when you brought up the beach is that, you know, the city still owns all the property, boardwalk, all the buildings, it's their responsibility. So when Mayor Pasero starts bellyaching about the condition of the place, well, that's because we're not putting a nickel into it.
Correct.
And it's not Sedexo's responsibility to.
We are the administrators. We're not the contractors who are leasing the place out to run it. If you are, if you're a management company, yeah, you may fix a doorknob that broke, but you don't do capital improvements. That's not your job. The owner does the capital improvements. We do the capital improvements. I'm sorry, we're supposed to do the capital improvements. The mayor has not looked at that as something that is our responsibility. And quite honestly, the buck stops at his desk. You know, with the big paycheck comes the big responsibilities. It's, and to go hand-in-hand with that, public safety and crime. Oh, my goodness. I don't know if you've ever been on Montauk Avenue from late April, early May, until the first frost. But there are, literally, in one night, easily 100 bikes, like motor scooters, motorcycles, that go blasting down, popping wheelies, guys standing on the seats. Every so often, you see the ambulance and the fire trucks come down because somebody got in an accident, and all of their friends just bail. But also, you have the very fast cars that come rushing down Montauk Avenue, literally, at 90 miles an hour or faster. Because it's that long straightaway, and nobody sits there to watch and go, we're going to hit you. It would take one camera, and this town, this city, would make hundreds of thousands of dollars in speeding tickets. One camera. Maybe one going each way.
You don't see much, in any capacity, whether it's police work or building codes, fire codes, or anything where there's any follow-up and enforcement.
None whatsoever. I, honest to God, I am amazed that the hotel downtown next to the Guard, the Section 8 housing place...
Yep.
I'm surprised that that place is still open. Because I've walked in there, and I walked in there a few years ago, and I was dumbstruck. I couldn't, I couldn't even imagine living there. I have, I come from a large family, and besides the six that my parents had, my parents also adopted 14 more kids from around the world. And all of them with some sort of either physical disability, emotional, mental. But it taught me a lot. It taught me a lot of patience. But two of my brothers live in housing down in North Haven. And I said, you know, why don't you guys come up here? And my brother BJ, who is from India and he has no arms, and he actually is in a very famous picture with Mother Teresa when he was a baby. And he said, Hans, have you ever gone in this place? I said, no. He said, come on. And we went in, and he's like, let's just go as far as we can. And we found somebody, and my brother's like, hey, you know, I'm thinking of moving here. Can you, can you show me around a little? I was like, yeah, whatever. We just walked around, and I was gobsmacked. I had no words. I was like, dude, you are not moving there. I said, I will pitch a tent for you before that. And he said, as I was saying it, he said, and it'll be better accommodations. And I don't understand how that's like that. It's like we, as a town, are slum lords. And it's horrible. And the violence, the crime, the lack of concern for people by... And the violence, the crime, the, the lack of concern for people by, and I'm just gonna tell you, I know that he is not the one who said, I need a raise. But Pasero got a raise to $160,000 a year.
He stumbled his salary since when he started.
Okay. Well, it was the board that, or the city council that voted that raise for him.
That's correct.
He could've refused it. At the same time, the police force was cut. And $50,000 a year for a new cop, and, oh, wait, he got a $50,000 raise, this last one. And quite honestly, I don't understand how somebody who is doing the job that he's doing can in good conscience take a raise, any kind of a raise. He doesn't need a cost-of-living raise, he doesn't need to get his salary up to 160. He's making more than a junior senator, or a junior congressman in the United States Congress. You know, they make $145,000 a year start. He's making 160. Is he really doing that much better?
That's debatable.
It is debatable, especially before this last election. I just don't understand how somebody can put themselves first when they're living in a city that's paying their salary, and he goes, well, we're gonna give you a tax cut, but you're gonna pay more taxes. It's like, wait, what? Because my wife's in my tax? Because we live here. We have a house, we, we spent a lot of money, and we spent a lot of money to remodel it and bring it up to date, so it didn't look like it was a house that was neglected and going to fall apart. Lot of, lot of sweat equity, lot of money, lot of improvements, and, yes, wonderful people in the planning and zoning and building department, phenomenal people. Love 'em, love 'em to death. But how can you tax people? Because my wife is a disabled vet, I'm disabled, my mother-in-law, who lives with us, is a vet who's 78 years old, and all I have to do now is, I have to file the homestead exemption, and, you know, then even more taxes go away. But I haven't done that yet, because I'm living in a town that's giving me a lot of wonderful things. And right now, I'm not saying I want to pay more taxes, but I want to pay a fair share along with the people who need to pay a fair share. And when one person is at the top going, yeah, I'll pay some taxes, but give me more money. I don't understand that. In good conscience, good conscience, I could never do something like that. And one of the good things about being on the city council is, it is not a salaried position.
A small stipend. Well, there is a small stipend, although that's been jacked up significantly over the last 10 years.
I will more than likely take that small stipend and donate it to charity, because I don't believe that doing your civic duty should be something that you are being paid for. If it is your career, fine, you can get paid for that. And you should get paid by what you're doing. Not the job title, but by what you're doing, what you accomplish. If Mike Pasero were a CEO of a company, buddy, he'd be in, he'd be in front of a bunch of creditors right now, I mean, with deficit here, deficit there, deficit there, where's he getting his money? I'll just tax the people more. I, I don't, we're gonna have a tax break, but then we pay more taxes, because it's a shell game. I don't get it.
Well, you're on a crash course.
Well.
You know, one, one thing, I don't know if you're aware or not, but with this current budget, which we're just, we're now into a new fiscal year.
Correct.
In Public Works, which is the whipping boy of city departments, the Highway Division is down to two employees. So, when it comes to time for snow, who's gonna be plowing the snow? Who's doing any of their responsibilities? I mean, it's, it's a farce. Well, you mentioned public safety earlier, and the mayor does not adequately fund for police officers, and doesn't believe that we need a police presence in the central business district.
Right.
And there's a reason why we've got like a 50% vacancy rate downtown, because people don't feel comfortable down there.
Right. See, the heart of the city should be right around the heart of the government of the city. And that area is the most vacant area. And that leads me to think, well, maybe it's a vacant office. Because just like you say to somebody, oh, well, they're just an empty chair, well, I think he's been running this, this city as a vacant office. And I don't see him coming up with things and putting his face out there and saying, I am going to do this, so we can get to here, and I'm going to, for instance, how many things have you seen being done in the city, and they're all contractors, and all the contractors, and I don't have anything against people who are here legally, I don't have anything against people who say, I want to have a better life. But all the improvements down on Bank Street, the traffic circle over by New London High School, I didn't see city employees doing that. I didn't see our Public Works doing Public Works. I saw contractors who cost more than what it would cost to have our Public Works if we kept a cadre of, of Public Works people on to be able to do these things, and.
We're not even properly staffed for Public Works to do what, what they're supposed to do, cut grass.
Right.
Pick up, you know, garbage, and recycling, and shovel snow, etc.
When's the last time you walked, you, you drove up to an intersection, and you looked that way, and you're like, well, I don't know if there's a vehicle coming, because the bushes are grown too far out. And people are gonna come flying down this road, because we don't have enough police to enforce traffic, and the mayor doesn't want to spend money on things like cameras, because invasion of privacy. It's not privacy, you're in the public. We need to get out of the 1950s, where it's just coming off of, of Roosevelt, and then, then Truman, and we need to get more into the, we're into today, and we have to look at, where's our money going? How are we going to bring money in that's not just taxing people? Because, for instance, last night, I was talking to beloved Carter, and she's on one of the housing boards, and she said, people are being forced out of their homes because they can't afford the new rent, because the rent is going up 12 to 20% in a year. And the cost of living increased, if you are on any kind of a fixed income this past year, the COLA was, I think, 3.5% or something. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, but this is justification. I mean, we've got the, these new apartment buildings, the beam and the docks, and.
Wonderful.
Well, it's wonderful, but the rents are.
Astronomical.
Astronomical, and it's jacking up the rents on everything else.
But here's the thing, we have people coming in from New York, they're buying the buildings, they're having a management company run, and they say, jack up the rents. And they're doing to those buildings what the mayor's not doing to Ocean Beach. He's not doing capital improvements. They're not doing capital improvements, and they're getting these tax breaks to come in and buy these. Well, guess what? If you are coming in from out of the state, out of town, out of New London, you come in, you should not be getting a tax break unless you are going to give a certain amount of, we're going to get money back reinvested into the city to make sure that it happens. Yeah, we'll do a tax break for one year, but not a tax vacation. You need to pay your taxes. If I, if I open a business here, I have to pay my taxes. In fact, I do pay my taxes.
Well, these, these new buildings, new apartment buildings, are getting extraordinary tax abatements, I mean, and not only, but over 20 years. Used to be like a seven-year window, I mean, now it's tripled. It's amazing.
It is amazing.
Let's see what we got going here. Good evening, you're on the air.
Hey, Marty, how you doing?
I'm doing well. How you doing, John?
Good. I have one question for your prospective candidate, which I ask all candidates, potential candidates. If they, in their two years, what would be the main accomplishment they'd like, they'd like to see done? That they'd like to see themselves accomplish the two years of serving, their main objective?
My main objective, if I could get any one single thing done out of the five that I have, which is education funding, Ocean Beach finances, Sail Fest being not only paid for, but a moneymaker for the city, public safety and crime, and the tax equity and property tax burden, out of those five things, I would have to say all of the above. But the thing that everything hinges on, in my estimation, is when we talk about public safety and crime. You can't bring businesses into the city if you can't say, no, you're going to be safe. If we have a crime rate, and we have drugs on the street, and we have, I mean, the New London Police Department are phenomenal. They are amazing. And they are the kind of people who, if someone would just get behind them and give them that support that they need, so we can get more police officers into the force, we would have safer streets, we would have less people dying from drugs, we would have less people dying from car accidents, we would have lower insurance rates, because when you get your crime and your accident rate down, and your insurance rates go down, that brings more people in as well. So, all of the things focus around, and come in around, what we do as far as keeping your populace safe. If we could walk.
My second question to you then, as far as the seven committees, and it sounds like hearing you talk, you probably already, before running for it, you probably would want to chair public safety.
I would love to be a voice in public safety. I think that that would be spectacular. Because I, I used to be a, a fire police over in Stonington Borough for two and a half years, and when I lived in Orlando, I actually was a volunteer with the Mounted Police down in Orlando, Florida. I didn't patrol, I was a groom, but I've always been very, very friendly with, and very open to, and supportive of police forces and safety. And if you're not safe, you have nothing. I mean, that's the reason we have locks on our doors in our homes.
Well, staying on that note, I don't know what district or what area of New London you reside in, but on Coleman Street, around the 390 block between Taco Bell and Dunkin' Donuts, there's such an overgrowth that you're forced to walk out onto the street into traffic, because they need to cut that brush off the sidewalk. Another safety issue, they continue to allow parents to park on, on the street at Nathan Hale School on Ocean Avenue, which forces traffic to go over across the double yellow line into Oncoming. It's, it's a safety issue, but for years, they've, even though it's posted, no parking anytime.
Correct. And that's actually the same thing in all sorts of different places in our beautiful city. And our city would be even more beautiful if people were doing what is, I always say, follow the rules, and everybody will be happy. Well, the rules aren't being followed, and they're not being enforced. And you can't have police officers who are trying to stop crime going around and doing the, the things like being a meter maid, being, being the, the parking enforcement, being the, the overgrowth enforcement.
Overgrowth would be blight.
Well, you're right, blight, so, I mean.
And we have a blight officer, but we, many folks wonder what, what that individual does.
Haven't seen, haven't seen anything of the blight being taken care of. And quite honestly, Ocean Avenue is one of the worst offenders anywhere in this city.
Well, here, here you, earlier you talked about the mayor, you know, not having any plan. Our prior, what'd you call him, Marty? Keith Chapman was our Public Works Director prior to the first mayoral administration.
That's correct.
He had a 10-year plan, from vehicle maintenance to literally walking from the south to the north end, to make sure people had numbers on their, he had a whole plan as far as how the city would be, and our first mayor was nice enough to get rid of him.
Well, I will tell you right now, a 10-year plan is great, and I love long-term planning. I also like short-term planning. If you don't have a plan that's going to make a difference within six months of the, the plan being put into place and being administered, you're not doing the thing that you should be doing. And quite honestly, when you have somebody who is stymying everything that is going to make this city that much better, it, again, it boggles my mind, I don't understand. It's like, are you trying to, are you trying to hurt the city?
Well, like you said, you know, the rules need to be followed, but it's hard for the electorate, or the citizens of the city, to follow the rules, when administration and government don't follow our own rules, i.e. the charter.
Absolutely. And let me tell you, you know, people say, rules are made to be broken? No, they're not. Rules are made to be followed. If you don't like a rule.
Change it.
Change the rule. Exactly. And honestly, there are too doggone many things in this city that have not been followed from our charter. I, I, I see this constantly, whether it's in business, whether it's in my profession, whether it's going to a store. It is, it is the whole idea of, if you don't respect the city that you're administrating, how can you expect the teachers to respect their classroom? And if you're not respecting your classroom, how can you expect the kids to respect you? And if your kids are not respecting their teacher, guess what? They're probably not going to respect their mom and dad, because they're not being brought up that way, because they're being given the, the bad end of the stick as well. So, it all starts at the head. There's an old Italian saying, the fish starts to stink at the head. Well, guess what? This fish is stinking at the head.
Well, it sounds like you've got a lot of nice ideas, and I wish you the best of luck. You've got your work cut out for you.
Well, I just need the votes, because it's like I said to Marty a minute ago, people constantly underestimate me, people should never underestimate me.
Well, I, I take that under, so I heard you talk before about the carnival at St. Joseph's School, which I also was at when it was, was there, a couple weeks ago. But one of the things you need most all, and I've been here two decades, and Marty can attest to it, people have to identify, and I don't say, agree with your ideology, but they need to put a face with a name on the ballot when they go to the polls. If they don't know who you are, you're, you're already lost half, 50% of the chance of getting elected. They need to be able, oh, I look at Hans Hartman, oh, I've met him, I know who he, you know, like, a name associates, a face association with a name on the ballot is key in this city.
Absolutely. And, and I'm gonna tell you, I am one of those people that I don't mind talking to anyone, in fact, I. In fact, I talk to more people than I probably should. And I shake more hands than I probably should. And I even shook hands during COVID. And people are like, ah, just give me a fist bump. I'm like, no, I shake hands. And I look at people in the eye when I speak to them. And I don't want people to not know who I am because there are things that are going for me. My name, not a lot of Hans is in this town. I'm a little bit different than most people. For instance, I'm wearing a floral Hawaiian shirt right now. It's just kind of who I am. I, I even wear this at church. And I intend to knock on pretty much every door I can find in all of New London. I don't care if you're a Democrat. I don't care if you're a Republican. I don't care if you are anti-establishment. I don't care if you're a Marxist or a communist or an anarchist. I will talk to you and I will ask you questions. And I will say, here are the things that I would like to try and get done. And I just need to have a voice to be able to get that going on. Because right now, there is only one voice in the entire city of New London. Because there are a bunch of other people who are sitting around a table and they're going like this. The mayor says jump. They say how high? And honestly, I have no idea what anybody on the city council is doing because it's one voice. And it's not the right voice. There is no questioning of anything. It's just, here's what we're gonna do, push through. And anybody who stands up to dissent, they're told to shut up.
All I, all I know is I've been in the city a little over two decades. So I came when we still had a city manager former government. And the Matt city manager answered to the council and things ran more efficiently. We still had twice a year bulk pickup. We still had this. We still had that.
Yes.
It's, it seems we've lost, we're paying more like everything else in life and we've lost more ever since now that we're in our fourth term of a mayor former government, including businesses downtown.
Absolutely. When, when I first lived here, because I started living in New London first time around in the early 80s. And I was married to a woman who actually was a dorm director at Mitchell. And I actually graduated from Mitchell. And we had businesses downtown, all up and down Captain's Walk. And that was a no-drive zone over in that area. And you know what? It was flourishing. And everybody was doing the things that a city should be doing. Because they had, they had a city that they were proud. Bruce Reinhardt was over there at the police station. He was getting things done. The, the, the city manager was, you know, actually responsible to somebody. Instead of just going, oh, well, you're all a bunch of Democrats. You'll vote for me anyway. I'm just gonna keep going.
Gentlemen, I hate to cut in here, but we, we've kind of hit the time limit here. I'm getting the
Marty, thanks for meeting you, Hans.
Thanks for meeting you as well.
And I thank you for calling in. You offered a lot of contribution to the program. And I want to thank you, Hans, for your carving out an hour to be on City Focus and
Marty, I love it. And anytime you'd like to have me back, just let me know.
We'll probably have you on at least one more time.
I'd love it.
Thanks, folks, for watching City Focus tonight. Next week I have Tony D., Tony D'Angelo, who's a weekly guest on Lee Elsie's program. And we'll be discussing economics and politics at the state and national level. So we'll see you next week on City Focus. Good night.